Tonight's meeting to order, please. Rocco?
Youth Commissioner Langlois? Here. Member Young?
Here.
Member Shu?
Here.
Member Fiore?
Here.
Vice Chair Acevedo?
Here.
Chair Hedges?
Here.
All present, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, City Manager, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Please stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on our nation under our individual liberty and justice.
Thank you, ma'am. The appeal notice, was that yours? Thank you, Alma.
I keep forgetting to bring my glasses, and it just seems that it's getting smaller and smaller. This is, "Appeal Notice: In the event that you disagree with the action taken by the Planning Commission in regards to your application, or with any condition for approval of the application which is not a specific requirement of the Norco Municipal Code, you are entitled to appeal such determination or conditions to the Norco City Council, provided that such appeal is filed with the Norco City Clerk within ten calendar days after the requirement for appeals inclusive of payment of an appeal fee."
Thank you, Alma. Would you like to do the honors, please?
Alright, so for public comments, this is a time when persons wishing to address the presiding governmental body regarding the consent calendar or matters not on the agenda may be heard. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. The governmental bodies shall not discuss or act relative to any general public comment. And our first speaker is Bonnie Slager.
Good evening, everybody. I've been thinking since you had the commercial development on Sixth Street by Jack and the Boxman. It seems like, like you did on ADUs, gave some kind of examples, it seems like on corrals, on commercial property, it would be nice if the city gave some examples of those, showing they should be out of metal pipe and, you know, since pipe panels are usually twelve-foot sections, maybe twenty-four by twenty-four or thirty-six. But it was really obvious that this developer had no clue, and they spent a lot of time and money designing this cute little termite chart there. And I just thought it was too bad, and if the city gave some direction on what a horse crown might look like in a commercial project on Sixth Street, that it might be helpful and save them some time and money in developing the project. The other thing that became very obvious with that project since when it went to City Council, they spent a lot of time on it. I felt kind of sorry for these people, they've spent about four years trying to get to this point. It seems that, to me, looking from the outside, when you say if there's enough Western decor, you have to have less setback. I don't know what enough Western decor is. Is it one wagon wheel, or is it two wagon wheels and a cactus, or do you have to have kickers, or do you have to have a porch? What is it? And to be fair to a developer, instead of going through ten iterations of what it looks like, if you gave a little more guidance, I think when things are really fuzzy like that, it causes a lot of misunderstandings, and I wish you would clean that up a little bit in the city code. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
And our next speaker is Victor Pintado?
Hello again. I don't know if you remember me from last month. So I just wanted to speak on this briefly, as briefly as I can in three minutes. So, let's see here. We had some time to reflect back and voice our concerns with Erika this past month, that we did not think about at the time of our last meeting. Unfortunately, I was told last week that they would not present anything to you guys about our concerns tonight, so here we are. Looking back at last month's meeting, it felt rushed at the end to come to a decision after we kept going back and forth with the topic, is it an ADU or is it JADU? I'd like to clarify some details about our project and express some concerns about the condition that was added. We plan to build an attached ADU that is under 500 square feet, full kitchen, bathroom, laundry space, separate entrance, and no access to the main house. On the plans, it states it's an ADU, not a JADU, excuse me. Under my understanding of the state law in Norco, this unit clearly qualifies as a standard ADU, not a JADU. Our design does not meet the JADU criteria for two main reasons. It must be located within the existing walls of the main house, example, conversion or a bedroom, and allows for only a small, efficient kitchen, not a full kitchen. And on per Norco, number four states, "JADU means a unit no more than 500 square feet in size and contained with a single-family residence, may share or have separate sanitation facilities." Number one states, "An ADU attached or detached with the complete independent living located on the lot with a proposed or existing residence." So while the size might lead to assume it's a JADU, the key takeaway here is, JADU is defined by how it's created and not what features, I'm sorry, it includes, not just the square footage. On concern is that, one of our concerns is that the condition comes with higher costs and triggers school impact fees, that we did not realize that night. These weren't part of our original design, budget, or intent. We strongly feel that the decision to increase the size and take on those additional costs should be ours to make, not something imposed as a condition of approval for a variance setback. So we respectfully ask the council to reconsider allowing us to proceed with the ADU as we see fit. Either option is a fully functional, legal, and self-contained ADU, and will align with our goals and budget and complies with all applicable standards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
At this time, I have no further public comments.
Okay, we'll close the public time and bring it back to us. Two, we'll go to 2A, approval of Planning Commission regular minutes. Do I have any one?
I'll make a motion to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from May 14, 2025.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Youth Commissioner Langlois?
Yes.
Member Young?
Yes.
Member Shu?
Yes.
Member Fiore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Acevedo?
Yes.
Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to 4A, which is a continued public hearing. Do you need us to vote on that, Alma?
I believe so. Needs to be, sorry, needs to be continued. This Agenda Item 4A, it was advertised through this meeting, but needs to be continued to allow the developer to refine the map to include half-acre and quarter-acre lots.
Okay, thank you. Anyone like to make a motion to continue it?
I will make a motion to continue Agenda Item 4A off calendar for General Plan Amendment 2022-02 AMB, and Zone Change 2022-1, and Tentative Track Map 38330.
Second.
Youth Commissioner Langlois?
Yes.
Member Young?
Yes.
Member Shu?
Yes.
Member Fiore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Acevedo?
Yes.
Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to 4B, and this is yours, Alma.
Yes, Commissioners, again, this Agenda Item 4B is a proposed amendment to our existing objective development standards, which is known as the ODS. The intent of this amendment is to refine the ODS standards to ensure that this type of development that is basically facilitates, that is facilitated under the ODS, multifamily and mixed-use development, is compatible and complementary to the city's, the city of Norco's agrarian architecture style and small-town community character. The intent of this evening is for the Planning Commission to ask questions, to provide comments, and ultimately for that, a recommendation can be forwarded to the City Council. And the whole entire packet was included in your staff report. Our consultant is here, is going to do a presentation, and that way, they're also available along with staff as to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you.
Before we get on to it, can I make a request for future ones, especially when it's a, when it's a document that's an amendment from our previous one? Is it possible to cloud and highlight the revisions and the sections, so that it's a little easier to see what was revised? And I know that when we've done code sections before, you guys have highlighted it, but with this, when it's nested in there, it was a little difficult to determine exactly what was added and changed.
Yeah, and that is appropriate. The, our consultant has highlighted, we'll be doing a slide highlighting the differences, but yes, that makes a little sense, so noted.
Wondering. Thank you.
So with that, I will hand it over to our consultant team.
Good evening, Chair Hedges and Commissioners. Usually, I'm here tonight to talk to you guys about the general plan update process that we've been going through, but tonight, we're here for the objective development standards. And very first, where am I pointing this up there? I just wanted to kind of give a reminder that there is a state law for having objective development standards for multifamily and mixed-use development. The Housing Accountability Act is what establishes the state's overarching policy that local governments can't deny, reduce the density of, or make infeasible housing development projects that are consistent with objective local development standards. So that's a standard that involves no personal subjective judgment by a public official. And the intent is that developers are given certainty as to what the standards and conditions are that apply to their project and how those standards can be met. So it is just a reminder that you do need to have, you know, objective development standards and what the purpose is. And why are we updating them now, you might be asking? Because you do already have a very good set of objective development standards. But as you know, as we've been working together over the past, I think, you know, year and a half on your general plan update, we've been digging in deep into discussions with the community, decision-makers, and city staff about what makes Norco Norco, what the Norco lifestyle is, so that our policy direction in the general plan can directly support, maintain, and enhance this lifestyle, even with new growth in the city that might be at a higher density. So as these discussions evolved and we explored various design concepts for the opportunity sites over the past year and a half with our consultant team, Sergeant, led by Sergeant Town Planning, city staff came to realize that the current ODS, while very good, they don't fully deliver in creating the agrarian, small-town design and character that we are defining and envisioning as part of the general plan update process. So, you know, we decided now is an opportune time to update the current ODS, and so that we can ensure that we have the proper development standards in place to implement the vision and policy direction of the general plan when you get an application for mixed use or multifamily. And I should also note, just from working in lots of other cities on objective development standards, they are challenging. They're challenging to write, they're challenging to get just right in terms of the desired outcome, while also providing enough clarity and flexibility to a developer. So even without the general plan, I think it's very normal and appropriate that a couple years into having objective development standards and staff working with them on real applications, they're able to pinpoint and say, hey, this is what's working, this is what's not, this is what we're missing. So I think it's just appropriate timing to, and very expected to do an update at this point regardless. So the objectives of this update are really to visualize and clarify the types of multifamily and mixed-use development that are compatible with Norco's agrarian, small-town character, update and expand the ODS to deliver places that are compatible with this character. And then an important piece of this update is to better integrate into multifamily and mixed-use development, shared community amenities that reflect Norco's agrarian heritage, and expand opportunities for community participation in equestrian and small-plot agricultural activities. And yes, well, we don't have a redlined document for you. This is a redlined table of contents, so hopefully this is helpful. And again, while the existing ODS are very solid and very clear and very good in most categories, they were lacking in just a few areas. So this update includes adding standards for public realm and connectivity. So these would be standards for having a traditional block network, streets, and open space standards. In the open space standards, this is a section that adds requirements for equestrian and agricultural amenities, very specific to the Norco lifestyle. Clarifying and expanding site design standards, including how buildings relate to the street, how they're accessed by pedestrians, where parking is located, and how it's accessed. Clearing and clarifying and expanding building design standards and architectural standards to include traditional small-town design components, such as facade elements, such as porches, stoops, shop fronts. And then there were some changes to the building massing section as well. And then, just a note on the architectural section, we worked very closely with city staff on that and heard a lot from various city council members especially. And this section kind of very intentionally moves away from Western to the broader term of agrarian, small-town character. You know, something that we kind of heard throughout our general plan update process, especially from the city leaders, was, you know, we want to avoid hokiness, and we want real, authentic facade and building composition. So that was really one of the, another key objective of this update, and sort of the shift to focusing on agrarian, small-town as the character that we're aiming for, rather than just using the word Western, which sometimes resulted in, you know, just a cowboy boot being tacked onto a building or something. So we're really aiming for authenticity that reflects Norco's lifestyle. So that's just the introduction, and with that, I'll pass it over to Juan with Sergeant Town Planning, who authored the update.
Thank you, Jean, and good evening, Chair Hedges and members of the commission. My name, as Jean mentioned, is Juan Gomez Novi with Sergeant Town Planning. And I'll just give a brief summary of the enhancements, the main enhancements we made. So we'll be going through every aspect of just what changed, basically. So these ODS apply citywide to projects that require ministerial approval, so projects reviewed by city staff, as well as those subject to discretionary review. So it applies, basically, it can apply to all projects. And those would be projects with two or more units, and also to mixed-use development that includes housing. So basically, anything that's not a single-family house. So I will focus on the ODS, as mentioned, I'll focus on the ODS sections that changed, give a brief, broad overview of each component, and we'll not get into a lot of detail of each one. So as Jean mentioned, these ODS introduce urban design standards and place-based architectural standards, guidance that was missing in the previous iteration of the ODS to guide new development to be more Norco-specific. So traditional places, as shown in green on the left, and as exemplified by Norco's character-defining neighborhoods, are built on a network of interconnected streets and blocks that enable multiple routes to destinations, provide a more inviting and comfortable place to walk, ride, bike, and drive, and contribute to its sense of place, most importantly. Conventional development, as shown in red on the right, is organized typically around parking lots and lacks the connectivity to its surroundings. So to achieve this sense of place, the ODS introduce block and connectivity standards that specify maximum block sizes, which are about 1,800 feet perimeter with 600-foot maximum length, and how these new blocks relate and connect to existing development and adjacent sites. They provide illustrative plans to show how these street and block standards apply to the Fourth and Hamner site, and how open space, community amenities, equestrian trails, and buildings relate to the internal street grid and surrounding streets. These site plans were also used to test the development capacities of these sites as allowed by zoning, and to inform the refinements to these standards. So we kind of drew these as a test to see, to make sure and see how this all fits. And also importantly, to see how it can fit with open spaces and introduction of trails and some of the community amenities, which I'll talk about in a minute. We also did an illustrative study for the Second and River site, to, again, just test how these work, and also to give guidance to a developer when they come in. It gives them kind of a starting point to begin work. The ODS provides street design standards to guide the design of internal streets, including sidewalks, equestrian trails, street trees, on-street parking, and how buildings relate to the sidewalk. Here you see a diagram of those components. And an important, regarding streets and on-street parking, in conventional development, you may have just a parking lot in front of a, in front of a building. By having the street, you actually have a sidewalk or a trail, and trees, and things that just make it more neighborhood-like as opposed to just a parking lot. And then here, you see the design standards for each of these components. The ODS also clarify the types and quantities of community amenities that new development must provide, including which ones are required and which ones are optional. They introduce a point system based on development size. So here you can see just ranging in size, smaller the project, the more points and amenities that you would need to provide. And then here, you can see, you know, that requires Norco-specific amenities, such as equestrian trails and community gardens, is a basic requirement in the left column, and enable optional Norco-specific amenities, such as shared equestrian barn or chicken coops. There also can be additional equestrian trails, even a commercial, small, little commercial Main Street, which would be applicable especially on Fourth and Hamner, potentially, additional park, and additional park space. There are also conventional amenities that can be provided, such as common rooms, swimming pools, barbecue areas, playgrounds. So the bigger the project, the more amenities that would be provided, and the goal being to encourage and require Norco-specific amenities. The second component of these ODS where enhancements occur is site design. In places, buildings are located at the front of the lot, with onsite parking located behind or next to the buildings, out of sight, basically, while projects, while kind of conventional projects face parking lots or private open spaces, and back onto public streets behind landscape buffers or walls. I've been picking on this project in one of your neighborhood cities, but on the right, it kind of shows the kind of placeness of how development could occur without proper guidance. In places, pedestrian access to buildings is from the street and sidewalk, or a common open space that connects to the street and sidewalk, through human-scaled frontage elements, such as porches and stoops. And pedestrian access to projects, on the other hand, is typically through parking lots or outdoor hallways. And often, open space is treated as kind of leftover space on a site. The ODS provide clearer, so to help achieve this, the ODS provide clear site design direction, including building, parking, and open space placement and configurations, and how these relate to one another, as well as pedestrian access to units from the street and through common open spaces, as discussed in the previous slide. The ODS adjust the setback standards, as shown here, with the new ODS standards on the left, and the previous on the right, generally reducing the setbacks. A lot of this actually came out of the site planning study we worked on to be able to accommodate the number of units that would be required as part of the housing element. So the setback distance between new development sites, and importantly, the setback distance between new development sites and existing R1 and A1 neighborhoods is maintained, but the setback distance is reduced from 60 feet to 30 feet. And I can talk a little bit more about that when I talk about building heights in a couple slides. But this setback area can be, consists of landscaping, open space, parking, or an alley. The ODS clarify how porches, stoops, lobby entries, and shop fronts for mixed-use projects are designed. Not only are these important for access, but they also enable, or provide a human scale to these buildings, and help break the massing of larger buildings. They make buildings just more human scale. They clarify where parking is located, its design, when located next to the street or sidewalk, and how it is screened from the surrounding development. They direct how parking is accessed, driveway design, and the design of garage door openings, all with the goal of perpetuating Norco's agrarian, small-town character. They also adjust the parking standards to be generally consistent with current best practices, and note that these, what you see here, we've got residential on the left, non-residential on the right, and then you can see the new and previous standards. The new standards are minimum standards, so developers can provide more if they feel the market demands more. So you can see, there's also the blue box, which contains the existing municipal code parking standards, just for comparison. So the two and three-bedroom units are consistent with the municipal code generally, while the studio and one-bedrooms have less spaces, and units with four or more bedrooms have more. So there's a little bit of tweaking based on unit size. Regarding non-residential, the reduced parking standards take into account the proximity of the housing whereby some, where some patrons may walk to the restaurant and stores, and a parking approach where patrons park once and visit multiple stores or restaurants. So that's reducing the number of spaces from four per thousand to three, which generally can work in environments like that. And again, these are minimums, not maximums. One other component that's been added is that with director approval, parking may be reduced in exchange for amenities, some of the amenities were. parking may be reduced in exchange for amenities, some of the amenities we discussed earlier. Then finally, there's the building and architectural design side of the ODS. So, space, place-specific buildings reflect the character of their local setting. For Norco, this includes siding, muted colors, pitched roofs, and wood detailing, as you can see on the left. And then projects, on the other hand, are not place-specific and generally can be located, look as if they can be located anywhere. So, the, an important adjustment here is the ODS clarify building heights, introducing number of stories, which the previous ODS did not have, and adjusting the height limit at the center of the site to forty-eight feet, while requiring lower heights, three stories and forty feet within a hundred feet of the project boundary, and even lower heights of two-and-a-half stories or thirty-five feet within eighty feet of the R1 and A1 zones. And a two-and-a-half, a half-story is basically a space in an attic that is lit with dormer windows or something. So, it appears like a two-story building, but does have a partial third story. And just for comparison, the existing building heights are forty feet at the center of the site, thirty-five feet within a hundred feet of the project perimeter, and thirty feet within thirty-five feet of the R1 and A1 zones. And actually, here you can see those, the comparison of those. So, you can see the new standards in the center column, the previous in the right, and then you can see the various distances from A1 and R1 in the top line and then within a hundred feet of the property perimeter and then more than a hundred feet from the property perimeter. So, you can see the heights, the increase to forty-eight feet basically comes out of the strategy of enabling more flexibility for buildings, especially if you have a commercial ground floor. So, you could have a taller ground floor, a commercial ground floor, and still not have to feel like you're cramming the building in to that envelope. In the previous ODS, there was no specification of stories. So, within that forty feet, you could, quote, cram a four-story building into that. So, what this does is, it does increase the height a little bit, but it's giving flexibility for the design of those ground floors or higher residential upper floors if desired. In addition to the additional heights of chimneys, elevator overruns, and stairwells, and service shafts regulated by the existing ODS, the first bullet point there under the table. This also provides standards for rooftop shade structures and roof access, as you can see in the second, in the second and third bullet items. So, what that's saying is that it's enabling like a roof deck or something like that, and you could have a trellis to shade that. That's, those are new, so those new, that second and third bullet point enables activity on the roof. Then, they provide enhanced building massing and frontage design direction to ensure buildings are house and barn form, in keeping with Norco's agrarian, small-town character. Traditional buildings are essentially boxes that utilize simple modulation strategies, such as stepping a portion of the facade back, varying the facade height, using roof forms, using different window types and configurations, or attracting, attaching balconies, porches, and bay windows. So, basically, it's using simple elements to make, basically, simple buildings and not overly complicated buildings. They provide guidance on the design of facade elements, including balconies, bay windows, awnings, and galleries and arcades. Here you see the gallery, which is basically like a porch on a commercial building, or the arcade, which has occupied space over the ground floor, basically porch. And these provide human scale and help break down the massing of larger buildings as well. These ODS also update the previous architectural standards, which, as Jean mentioned, focused on the Western style to guide the design of buildings that better fit Norco's small-town agrarian character. So, the buildings focus on the elements that are characteristic of traditional, small-town buildings that are inspired by ranch houses, barns, and small-town buildings. So, here you see a list on the slide of elements covered by the ODS that provide guidance for multifamily development, mixed-use development, as well as commercial development. And with that, a very brief and summary of the document.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm sure we have questions. Kathy, would you like to?
I wouldn't like to start.
Okay, Jean, you're up.
There's a lot to unpack here, so I'm not sure the best way to go through all this. Just curious, has city council seen this yet? Have they, have they seen it?
They received the same package you do.
Okay. I just, I feel like this is a big conversation, and I don't know if the best way is that we just do like this, like we normally do, and just pass it off our recommendations, or perhaps maybe do a mixed meeting with city council on this. I'm just not sure what the best option is, but there's a lot to go through here. So, I don't, I guess my questions are in each section. And so, I'm like, I don't know the best way if we should just break it down by section or like start with section one and then go, you know, from there. Go through notes. Okay, so I don't have.
Before we get into specifics, I want to ask a quick kind of process question.
Okay. I'll pass then, for right now then.
So, I like everything that you guys have done in terms of what I would categorize as clarifications, like in terms of the points for the amenities. That was great, because one of the questions that we had when the ODS first came through was, I looked at the list, and I was like, well, what's to prevent someone from providing thirty chicken coops? Because that's the cheapest thing out there. And so, I love that you guys clarified that. You guys clarify a lot of the agrarian elements on there. What I don't understand and definitely not in favor of is everything that was taken to make the process easier. And I say that from the backing of, when we looked at the ODS, it was, this is a state-mandated program. We are looking at defending our city, so we are putting out these restrictions that are tough restrictions, so that someone doesn't come in and just go, all right, easy-peasy, we're done, and no review by the planning commission necessary. So, specific things like why, we were very specific and had a very long discussion about the parking number, and we specifically pushed those numbers up. And so, I'm very concerned about why we would push that down. We also had specific discussion about building height and limiting it so that you don't have a roof deck of people looking over neighbors' yards. So, I don't know why we would take a step back from that and specifically allow that. So, there's these loosening restrictions that I'm not sure why we went that direction. And I think that's maybe what Tara's also thinking about, how we go about this, because I think if we were making recommendation, how would we kind of address that? So, that was kind of.
Points out something else, you know, that to clarify, you know, these are, the density, the HTO zones, which this more than likely apply, has a density of twenty to thirty dwelling units per acre. What our consultant did is basically look at the standards and look how revised standards would accommodate that high density with a design that is compatible with the neighbor, with the city. Being so restrict, for example, on certain standards, for example, parking is going to create a situation that if a, let's see, a developer comes in with affordable housing and they ask for a density bonus, they're going to have to, you know, they can pretty much get away from, you know, they can definitely ask for a waiver of parking requirements. What our consultants was basically tasked to do is like, give us a scenario that's, that'll facilitate the density. Twenty to thirty dwelling units per acres is a lot, is pretty high. But in a way that it meets, you know, it fits into the community. If you're going to have to go a little taller here, you know, kind of change the requirements, I mean, we didn't back off, we didn't push back on that too much, because again, the bottom line is we want a development that fits with the community, not something that is just a bunch of rectangulars. You have the parking, but you don't have what's intended for our city. So, that was basically the underlying reason why we kind of went that way. But nonetheless, I mean, it's up to the, ultimately up to the, you know, recommendation to provide the planning commission to the city council. But keep in mind that the developer, especially when it's affordable, they can come in, and if it's so strict, you're more than likely going to get them asking for waivers of the requirements. So, that was basically an underlying reason, and hopefully, that kind of helps guide a little bit of the discussion tonight.
So, we just continue of what our recommendations and questions are as opposed to having a joint meeting or? Okay, well, let's go ahead, Jean. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and just go through my concerns then. Okay, so there's nothing really in chapter one, so I guess I'll go to two. I don't know, I've got notes everywhere, so I'm like, just, I don't. I think that, I think on two, it might be. Oh, it was two, and I was on the, the table for like the street design elements. Page twelve, table two-point-three-B. And I just need a clarification, like, for example, the vehicular lane width. It says ten-foot preferred, twelve-foot max. I know this has been in the conversation in the past during this process about like the widths, because we wanted to slow down. For example, let's take on Sixth Street, we wanted to slow down, but then we have our, you know, trailers going down. Is the ten-foot, because it says ten-foot preferred. We discussed this, I'm trying to think, how long ago was we discussed the lane lengths or widths for like Sixth Street, for example, to try and slow it down?
Under the general plan discussion, I believe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but that, as far as slowing down the traffic on Sixth Street, is that kind of?
Yeah, I remember there was a discussion about the, because it says ten-foot preferred, but I think during that conversation, we wanted, we didn't want to go down to those narrower lanes.
They were not changing anything on Sixth.
Okay, because it says, the language says preferred here, and that's why I was just wondering for clarification on that.
Yeah, so I think I could, if I could just offer a, remember now, this, these are applying to mixed-use or multifamily and mixed-use development, which is limited to your, a few sites in the city. So, what these standards are going to be applying to is like the internal streets.
Internal streets, okay.
On a new project. So, it's not to go back and change Sixth Street or change Hamner.
That's clarification on that one. Okay, good, perfect.
And I would just add that the ten-foot width in a neighborhood street like that is often preferable to just help keep traffic speeds down.
That was the discussion. Okay, so yeah, here's where I have a little bit more, though. On page thirteen, and it goes into section C, the required amenities. The community gardens part here, it says multifamily, let's see, it's C, section two, B, community gardens shall be required as follows. Multifamily buildings with more than ten units shall provide community garden. Now, you said it was, this applies to basically two units or more, correct? Developments with two units or more?
That is correct.
I would like to see ten units lowered to, I wouldn't, I want to see that lowered, because I want every single, and we can go as low as two, because the whole point is keeping our city rural, and every develop needs to have a community garden or place or paca or whatever we're calling it. But I don't care how small it is, it's like we need to have space for that in every single property. So, I would like to see that personally, I'd like to see that reduced to two, since this requires two or more. And then it says, one plot of twenty-five square foot for every five units, so of course, that number would change. I feel like twenty-five square feet is kind of a funky number. Like, if you're doing a raised bed and you're doing maybe like, you know, an eight-by-four or a nine-by-three or a nine-by-four, you're going to get kind of, I mean, an eight-by-three is twenty-four square feet, and three is not that wide. So, if you're going to go for four, thirty-two, so if we can get up to like, maybe like thirty-two square feet, or just something a little bit more, it doesn't have to be a whole lot more, just for a good-sized, standard-length width of a raised bed, I think would be a little bit more appropriate. And then, let's see, yeah, so there's that, I would like to see larger. The, then when we hop over, it kind of gets all together to section three, B, you know, with the fruit, produce-bearing trees. Can we, and I know it's like later, it's going to be later in some of the tree recommendations, can we put fruit, produce-bearing trees as recommendations for the communities as well? So, that's another thing, too, that I'd like to see more. For example, I'll just, in Fayetteville, Arkansas, there is an app. They have a city app that basically shows every edible tree that's in the city in public spaces. And so, we're an agricultural community. Why cannot, why can't we have edible trees all over our city in public spaces? And so, that would be going with our agricultural theme, if we could have more fruit-bearing trees as part of our regular landscaping as well. And then, chicken coops. When I get down to section four, I want to see the chicken coops not as an optional, but as a requirement. And the reason, the reason why I'd like to see chicken coops go as a requirement is because it's often joked that chickens are the gateway, the gateway farm animal. And actually, it's actually just come out that chickens are now the number-three most popular pet. So, people dream of having chickens, people in the cities dream of having chickens. If you see people's face light up when they, for example, K-Mar Farms, when she has an open house, and people from the city, from Orange County, are holding chickens, their face lights up. So, the opportunities for a city dweller to come to Norco so they can fulfill that dream of having a chicken, even though they're living in an apartment, I think would be a phenomenal thing. And just as an example, in Wallenford, Washington, you can look this up, there's a news video on YouTube. They have rooftop chickens, and they have a coop cam. And so, this great little news story tells the story about people with their chickens on their rooftop, and people moved to this apartment complex because they wanted to have chickens. So, I think with the popularity, the growing popularity of backyard chickens and people wanting chickens, I think that that would be a great draw for people, because it's easy, it's affordable, it's not hard to incorporate into the plan. And with that, if there was that chicken requirement and that community garden requirement, then what we could do essentially is let every news station in Southern California know, this is Norco. This is what you can have, you can move here, you can have chickens, you can have a garden. Then I'd have the Eat Center come in and do classes onsite and teach people in the apartment complex itself, in their community garden, how to nurture it and how to do it. And then we can possibly, hopefully, get people that are living in this community to take classes at Eat Center. Then, from there, it's a whole slippery slope of getting involved in the lifestyle, because what we're after is not just getting people to live in these large communities. We want people to live in these large communities and love, truly love, this lifestyle. And the way we do it is providing them places to have chickens, places to grow their food. And I think that that, the more we can encourage that, the better. I mean, there's the whole equestrian part, but I'm going to gear it more towards the chickens and the growing your own. the chickens and the, the growing your own food because before I moved to Norco, my dream was to have chickens and grow my own food, and now I get to do that. But now, with the price of, of real estate, you know, and the average home in our city being a million dollars, it's very difficult, but people still have the dream. And according to Patrick at the Eat Center, like, half of the people that are taking classes at the Eat Center do not live in Norco, they live outside of the city, they're coming here from other places. Some of them do not have places to farm, and they have to use the community farms, or have to do land leases or something like that. So this might give a p, person that is taking classes an opportunity to have our lifestyle. So bringing those elements, chicken coops, um, more, um, more places to grow their own food, I think would be very beneficial for that, um, for what our city's mission is and our goals are. And also, getting us out, like I said, on the news, I'd love to see that advertised because then we're gonna attract the right type of people who love our community. So, that's it for this section. That's it for this section.
Ready?
I had a, I do have a couple.
Okay.
Smaller ones.
Sorry.
Back on, um, page 12, uh, again, the street design table, um, the section, or it also is, um, depicted on the exhibit on, uh, page 11. This was helpful to kinda have a cross, um, a crosscut of what the street would look like if you were laying on the ground looking straight ahead. One, um, concern I would have, and it's very small, but, um, there was a comment here on the section that sidewalk and access zone, um, that would be between what would be our horse trail and the private property, uh, front property line. The comment that, um, that area, of course, allowing or requiring that six-foot minimum for pedestrian, um, access, um, could be somewhat encroached upon, um, by tables and chairs that might be associated with that business. Is it possible, or I would recommend, um, given what occurs regularly here in Norco, um, under, you know, the walkways of businesses, the tendency to bring tables and chairs out for the guests, um, seating, or even if it's a eatery, to add more seating by bringing them out, um, that's okay, as long as that minimum width for sidewalk, uh, access is there, but those tables and chairs tend to migrate, and then we've got an issue with, um, lack of, of appropriate access. So I would recommend fixed as an adjective for table and chair, or maybe bench seating that might go along that section. The fixed then, you know, eliminates the moving, migrating. And, the other one, um, had to do with, and, and I was thinking more along Sixth Street, so that's not the case, but, um, our mail deliveries here because we have so few cluster boxes, um, and I know these are designed to have cluster box mail collection, um, most of our mail deliveries are stopping traffic, um, on all of our streets, especially Sixth Street, which is a little bit hazardous, but, um, is there, um, can we provide that cluster box requirement to be within, uh, the parking lot or somewhere far enough away that the mail delivery vehicle isn't gonna be parked on the street?
Doesn't interfere with traffic, with street traffic, yeah.
That was, that was it?
Oh, Jeff, you, you want Jeff to, Jeff doesn't have any questions?
You know, I, I'm actually gonna refrain from specific comments on these, I'm gonna speak more broadly, so I, I'll wait till...
Danny? Any specific?
Um, and I've done a lot of, a lot of, um, multi-family homes like that in Orange County and everything, and one thing we write and a lot of problems was turnarounds for wheelchairs, and I think the sidewalks should be wider, um, um, it's all gotta be, um, handicapped all the way out, um, I think should be rest areas, but the sidewalk, I, I think the biggest thing is a wider sidewalk than norm, you have to have, yep, or if not over 200 feet, you have to have a turnaround. But, um, I think still looks better than, uh, to have a little bit wider than normal sidewalks.
And you would recommend wider than the six-foot that we're recommending, uh?
Well, six foot's big.
Mm-hmm.
Six foot.
Yeah.
Sidewalk, yeah, that'd be fun.
But we, yeah, we can, but yeah, that, and the turnaround, it could be, um, turnarounds could be also be part of landscape features or things like that.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of times if the sidewalk's too close, or the steps are too close, and there's not a big enough turnaround, and then you only have two, you have to have one within 200 feet of it, um, that's when you should have turn, more turnarounds, you know? Uh, basic, everything else is just, I don't see anything else that I would wanna change and get bigger. Um, I've seen ones with flat roofs on top where they had even, you could have stairs going up to the flat roof on top, and they even had a barbecue up there and, and, uh, and so they could overlook, have a view. Um, uh, it really worked out better, a lot of people down in Orange County liked it, they had a good view from the top and everything, it's because they didn't have the yard and the distance up there, a lot of, had a lot of plants up there growing on the roof, and it was meant for that, you know, on that part of it.
Part of that could be site-specific, too. For instance, on Fourth and Hamner site, maybe that could work better than on Second and River, possibly where you have the R1, and maybe there's some, uh, adjustments for how that relates, how rooftop uses relate to single-family neighborhoods, possibly, but...
Sarah? My only concern, I understand it's pretty like cut-and-dry type of thing, and I understand what we're doing in trying to get more units, uh, the height, you know, i- if you go 48 feet and then you put a 20-foot parapet kinda thing, we're at 60 feet, that's really high. It doesn't seem small-town at all. Um, and I know there's different ways of hiding it and changing it, but it, I, the height just seems like it's just too high. I mean, people, we have people complain about the tilt-ups back here, and because they're up on a hill, they look really tall, they aren't as tall as it would be, but, so that's my main complaint, is going to the 48 feet plus the possible 20 feet, I just think it'd kind of stick out like a sore thumb, so I, I'm really against that, but everything else is gonna work out. Okay, Jeff, you're up.
All right, so I'm, I'm speaking just much more broadly on, on this topic now, um, and I think I wanna kinda back up to what we're trying to achieve here, which is to make a motion to, the recommendation is to make a motion to approve this, to be, to go to the city council. And I'll just be frank that I don't see us making that motion because there's a lot of specific changes that I would like to see here. So I don't, I don't feel that that is really achievable in this setting right now, but, um, again, I'm just kinda going back to when we worked on the ODS the first time, and I won't name any names, but I can tell you that if we did this, there are members of the city council who are going to call me up and say, "Hey, you're there to be our bulldog, to, to push back, not to make this a easy goal for the, uh, for the developer." And I will tell you that specifically when we were reviewing this, and we were talking about po, posing a hardship for the developer, what was conveyed at that point was, "Is parking gonna be too onerous?" And the response was, "Make 'em go underground parking." So that is the level of approach that we're looking at. We're not looking to make it easy. We're making this because the understanding is that, "Hey, if you meet the ODS, it's a slam dunk." So we're trying to make this, specifically this ODS to be tough, you need to make, meet some strenuous requirements to be able to come in here. And I think one of the things about the, the looming threat, which is very real, I'm not saying that it's not, of a developer coming in with low-income housing and being able to kind of skirt a lot of this. I think the developer is going to take advantage of everything they can, no matter what, so I'm, I'm not willing to make our design standards weaker because of a fear of that.
If I could maybe offer a couple of comments just on the parking, um, the parking and the height, actually, you know, we had some individual meetings with city council members as we were working on these, and a couple things was, you know, the really strong desire to, um, beef up the requirements for the amenities. So, th, the problem is, to have room for the amenities, sometimes things that suck up the space for that is the parking, so that...
This is where I go back to, make 'em underground the parking. That, that is the level that we were looking at.
Right, and we were also, though, trying to, you know, it, it is kind of a balance because you do wanna make it, um, feasible for developers, because then they're going to put more money into the project and give you the quality amenities that you want. So it's sort of that balancing game, I understand wanting to be strict, but that's what we were really trying to balance, was, um, make it realistic so that a developer could build the amenities that Norco wants to see and meet the minimum parking requirements, because I don't think you all want to see, see of parking, um, nobody wants to see that, and undergrounding the parking is very expensive. So it's just trying to provide...
I think the intent was that it's supposed to be cost-prohibitively expensive.
So that nobody develops it, you're right?
Well, to, to that, I guess the idea was that...
Yeah, so that, well, but that was, that was where this was coming from, but it's, so, and it's something we can continue to discuss. Um, and then with the height, again, that 48 is, is only when you're, I think it's one 100 feet in? No, I, right, the reason, though, that one came up was we did hear in meeting with the city, I think it was in our one-on-one city coun, meeting with the city council members, they really did want to see, especially the Fourth and Hamner, not just be multifamily, but be mixed-use. So again, what that's trying to allow for is to be mixed-use, to make a viable commercial ground floor, which is tall enough, so that's why...
I guess I don't, I don't understand a commercial ground floor having to be 12 feet tall. I mean, I don't understand.
I, I understand that, but the, the other part of that is, I think, I don't think we are being tasked with making concessions to make that happen, because what I'm looking at is, we're setting it in, but they, the developer can very easily make a mixed-use with a commercial first floor and reduce the number of levels up above in order to still make, still meet that 40-foot requirement, rather than having them allow the fourth floor, so that they have to then make this decision, "Do we do a commercial and two floors versus that?"
Right, and then the other, the other factor in play, which was why Sergeant Town Planning designed it, was also trying to meet the, um, the number of units identified in your RENA requirement. So it's all those factors.
They all go together.
They all go together, and so it was all those factors, and so I think it was that very strong push in discussions with city council members that they really did want to facilitate a mixed-use project rather than just a multifamily project, so we were trying to balance, balance all the factors. But, but, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and we'll take whatever recommendations you want to, to add on and, you know, and go back and work on it.
I think one of the common threads that's gonna be apparent in any development within the city is people are gonna be concerned about parking. And I think it's unrealistic to think that in this town in Southern California, that a four-bedroom unit is going to have three cars, and, and that we're not going to have people overflowing into street parking and crowding the neighborhood. And that was one of the big things that we were looking at, is, uh, when we're looking at the Valley Square, uh, development, we were very concerned about the parking, and the community showed up and voiced their concern about the overflow of parking, and that's why, I think, to reduce the parking when we're specifically talking about high-density housing is kind of talking out both ends here, in that we're going to imagine that they're gonna have less cars, and that they're not gonna be crowding into the, uh, community because we make it easier for them or something, you know?
Alma, was there any specifics other than what we're talking about now you'd like us to do? I mean, would you think we should have, meet with the city council, or, you know, I mean, it, I, we certainly can, I'm sure we can take what we've said already, but I'm just wondering whether we need anything further.
So, just so I understand, I mean, based on the conversation, um, i- am I hearing that, um, there should be some revisions based on the input, um, that we should go back before we move forward, or are you, is it...
Well, we can, we can also just, you can take what we've said so far and, and go forward, but I'm wondering whether we need more input from, like, city council or maybe a, a joint meeting, I don't know.
That is, I would say that, that is possible.
Cause I think we had the joint meeting when we did the ODS in the first place.
In the first place, yes, that is correct.
We did, we did, so this was just additional, or maybe we had to just take what we've done on our recommendations?
So, I mean, I'll leave, I'll defer to our city manager if, if, in...
I think one thing based on, you guys wanna have discussion, and you, you want also council's discussion to be part of this, so I think a workshop, um, might be the best bet for, for that.
Sure, I mean, it's, if that's...
I mean, I think everybody would agree that a workshop would work out great.
Yeah, if that's the recommendation from the planning commission, and I, I think that could be considered.
A workshop with them, yeah, I think that'd be a great idea.
Yeah, okay.
I think we do have public comment, though.
Pardon?
Yes, it is, it was a public hearing, so yeah, we, we, yeah, so we do have a public comment.
Do we have, okay, you wanna open the public, bring it, any public comment?
And our first speaker is gonna be Bill Naylor.
Um, I'd like to compliment you guys, you guys hit on a lot of topics that I was going to men, mention, but I think you really hit on a couple of key points, but there's three that I kinda thought I'd bring specifically, uh, to your attention. One, on the height of some of these buildings, you're wanting to raise the heights, and I know council had discussed this at some length not too long ago because of the height of our fire trucks that can get to, so we have to be real careful about going too high, or we're gonna have to get new fire trucks at, you know, what, 250, 300, 400, $500,000? Be careful what you're doing before you, you do, get into that, especially in our tight budget this coming year. The other item that I was a little concerned about was setbacks, uh, again, we're trying to have more of an open space, I, I understand to try to get, uh, more units in, you're kinda having to cut those back, but I really hate to see us cut back on our setbacks. And the last item that I very much agreed with was the concern on parking. Even though most of these two developments that they were kinda talking about, potential areas are in general areas where busing, buses might be accessible or whatever, but still, we do, people just don't get out of their cars, they're still gonna have their cars, and there's no parking, uh, the way I'm seeing it, I don't see enough parking spaces for some of these developments. And I don't think, honestly, I don't, if they want a variance, I don't think they should get it by the, uh, by the director, I think it should come back to the planning commission if there's a real legitimate reason for a change. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
I have no further public comments at this time.
Thank you, close the public hearing, all right. So do we want our recommendation to be a joint, oh, I'm sorry, um, okay, a joint meeting, is that what we're thinking of? Okay, someone making a...
So the recommendation this evening is, you're withholding on your, um, on your decision and would like for a joint meeting, is that, is that correct?
Okay, does someone want to make the motion? Hey, come on, T, you can do it.
I make a motion that we continue this in a joint workshop with city council.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have got a motion by member Young to continue this item and the discussion to a joint workshop with city council. Youth Commissioner Lang Louis?
Yes.
Member Young?
Yes.
Member Shu?
Yes.
Member Fiore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Acevedo?
Yes.
Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous to continue it with a joint workshop with city council.
Thank you. Uh, we'll now go to commission staff communications. Do I have any suggestions for agendizing items, Jeff?
Yes, I'd like to request agendizing a discussion around Norco Municipal Code 15.01.080 regarding the, some of the specifics of buildings that do not require permit.
And, and specific lot coverage, is that what you want?
Yeah.
That, that is in reference to the building code, correct?
Yeah.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to agendize? No.
We can do a motion to vote on that, unless it's the consensus of the entire commission that you wish to bring that agendized, so if you would like to make a motion, there needs to be a second, and then a vote.
Sure, go for it.
I, I make a motion to agendize for a future planning commission meeting, a discussion on Norco Municipal Code 15.01.080.
I'll second that.
Youth Commissioner Lang Louis?
Yes.
Member Young?
Yes.
Member Shu?
Yes.
Member Fiore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Acevedo?
Yes.
Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
Else, if not, we'll adjourn at 8:10.